City Council, I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann. Because of COVID-19, this meeting is being held electronically and is being recorded. To request permission to speak during public comment periods, an attendee must raise their hand by clicking on the Raise Hand button at the bottom of the screen. Attendees calling in must dial *9 on their phone, and a raised hand will appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge a member of the public and our clerk unmutes you, you'll need to state your name, address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you wish to speak on another topic, you'll need to raise your hand again. Thank you for following these directions and helping us to maintain meeting decorum. Could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson? Councilmember Fahey?
Here.
Councilmember Lay? Councilmember Lipton?
Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our first order of business tonight, which is discussion direction on our community energy efficiency renewable energy background for possible ballot item. We'll have a staff presentation, and then we'll take public comments on this topic, and then we'll have council discussion and action. So Megan Davis may be presenting or setting up who is presenting. Megan?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Let me just get my window open. Thank you, City Council. Thanks for the introduction, Mayor. We are going to have this conversation led by Emily Hogan, the Assistant City Manager for Communication and Special Projects. And then we also have Katie Baum, our Sustainability Coordinator here as well, who will be helping to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Emily. Please take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. I'm gonna pull up a PowerPoint presentation. Okay. Staff is presenting background on community.
Just one second, Emily. I might just have a technical problem on my hand, but I'm not seeing your presentation. Are other folks seeing it?
No.
Dennis, you are, or Dennis, you're not? Okay.
Let's try one more time. Okay. How about now?
We can see it, and now it's in presentation mode. All right, take it away.
Thank you. Staff is presenting background on community energy efficiency and renewable energy as a potential ballot item for 2021. This initial discussion will help focus staff on specific strategies and bring back more refined recommendations for our next discussion. In 2020, the city requested a proposal from Excel on what it would take to get the community to 100% renewable energy for electric use through a renewable energy credit purchase. Excel responded that a rec purchase of $650,000 annually would achieve that goal. However, Excel would not commit to using such funding for creation of new local renewable energy. At that time, council directed staff to continue exploring strategies and projects that could achieve the same result in addition to a rec purchase. The 2021 council work plan contains an item for discussion on a potential ballot issue for a tax related to sustainability and renewable energy needs and funding. Other topics on the work plan related to the site include sustainability and energy efficiency additions to the city's building code and COVID economic recovery. This slide shows the progression of the city's work related to climate action, starting with the city joining Excel's Energy Future Collaboration Program in 2018 and adoption of the city's climate action goals in 2020. Staff has identified additional strategies and projects to reduce energy consumption within the community and expand renewable energy, as well as funding sources to support such efforts like a climate action tax. A potential climate action tax would establish a fund dedicated to advancing community-wide climate action initiatives, which continues to be a priority for residents, which we saw in the 2020 citizen survey. Sustainability still ranks really high among the community's priorities. The most recent community-wide greenhouse gas inventory was completed in 2016 by Boulder County. Electricity from building consumption and production was the largest source of emissions, 50%, followed by natural gas, also for building consumption and production, at 17%, and mobile gasoline for vehicle consumption at 16%. The commercial and industrial sector was the largest emitter of GHD emissions, at 45%. Emissions specifically related to residential and commercial building energy use accounts for 67% of emissions. As identified by Boulder County and consistent with Louisville's findings, GHD reduction strategies focused on building efficiency, renewable energy, and transportation have the greatest likelihood of reducing emissions. Additionally, strategies targeted at the commercial and industrial sector will have a greater impact on community emissions as the largest sector emitter. A climate action tax could provide funding to address impacts of climate change and help to achieve the city's goals, including achieving 75% of residential and the commercial and industrial electric needs from carbon-free sources by 2030, which is one of the goals adopted by the city in 2020. We could look at starting to collect a tax in 2022 and sense that after five years, with the potential for a voter-approved extension along with new climate action goals that would take into account any progress made over the previous five years. Staff has developed three scenarios based on various levels of funding that a climate action tax could generate. They range from $400,000 to $1 million annually. As you increase the amount collected, the city could expand programming and resources and include a partial rec purchase. Staff has also identified several methods for collection of a tax, including sales tax, property tax, a utility bill fee, an excise tax, or development fee. Staff found, after completing an analysis, that it was not feasible to use existing city funding or pursue a utility bill fee or development fee, which leaves a potential increase in sales or property tax or a new excise tax. The city has the authority to adopt an excise tax that is based on electricity consumption by premise, and Excel would be required to add that charge to their customers' bills. The only other community to do this is Boulder, who adopted a similar tax in 2007 and that voters extended in 2015. It should be noted that Excel does not wish to recreate that tax in other communities and has not been supportive of this option in previous discussions. There are a number of programs and investments that the city could consider if a climate action tax was passed. These focus on renewable energy, energy efficiency, and electrification. Such programs could include solar redates, community-wide Excel programming, power purchase agreements or a rec purchase, efficiency redates, pilot programs, building performance support, benchmarking support, building electrification support, electric vehicle readiness, and electric vehicle or other bulk purchases. So there's a really wide menu of programs and tools that we could use that potential revenue on. And this is just, you know, that initial discussion to talk about, you know, council's focus areas and priorities and where those may fall. So staff has provided an example of program combinations that focus on renewable energy, energy efficiency, and electrification based on these different funding levels. This is just a starting point for discussion. We can also create new combinations based on interest in different sectors, focus areas, programs, etc. And there's also an attachment in staff's memo that goes into greater detail on the various program options that were researched by staff. It should be noted that depending on the funding source and program priorities, our approach should be designed in an equitable way, meaning one sector shouldn't bear the majority of the proposed tax without seeing a reasonable percentage of program support in return. So in order to refine these potential options, staff is seeking input on the following questions. First, is there interest in further exploring a climate action tax this year? If yes, is there a specific goal the city aims to achieve through that tax that should be included in the ballot language? Third, what type of revenue collection method should the city pursue? Fourth, is there interest in the different funding scenarios, A, B, or C, which is $400,000 annually, $700,000 annually, and $1 million annually, in considering uses for tax revenue and collection from the community? Fifth, should staff consider a different combination of programs within the options that we proposed initially? Sixth, when should the city start collecting a tax? And lastly, should there be a sunset date for the tax? With that, Katie and I are here and available to answer any questions. It's a lot of information that's included in the memo, and we're happy to dive into it further. Or if you identify any areas that we can provide additional research on, we're happy to do that as well moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Emily. That was a great presentation. So that takes us to our public comment period for this agenda item. If any members of the public would care to provide feedback to council, questions or comments, this would be the time to do that. So you can go ahead and raise your hand by clicking the Raise Hand feature that you'll find at the bottom of your screen if you've logged on by computer. If you're dialing in by phone, then you'll hit *9, and we'll see a raised hand. So the first member of the public to comment this evening is Laura Levesque. Sorry for butchering your last name, Laura.
Nope, you got it. Yep, Laura Levesque, perfect. Hi, everyone. Again, Laura Levesque. I am at 642 West Street, and I just wanted to state my support for a climate action tax or sustainability tax to be put on the ballot for this year. I think that there would be wide support from the community. Also, in reviewing the different options, I really like the excise tax option just because it does sync with somebody's actual electricity usage. And the first thing is to try to reduce our energy usage before buying recs or other investments. I also like that, the sync up with the PACE program. So as we knew in Louisville, our green business program has been successful to some extent. We've had, like, a lot of companies coming back year after year, but there is a big opportunity to really go after more of the commercial and more of the industrial companies. And we know, I'm a member of Louisville Sustainability Advisory Board, and two years ago, our board did outreach for the Green Business Program, trying to recruit companies to come on, participate in the program. And while they were cordial to us, there didn't seem to be enough hook or enough value for them to really take the next step and look at what else can be done. And I think if we sync up programs that help and give back to the business community, I think it makes it more attractive for them to participate and pace and really build out our green business recognition program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public care to comment on this agenda item tonight? All right. J. H. Cooperman. You should be unmuted.
Hi.
Hi there.
Hi, this is Josh Cooperman. I live at 2165 Wagon Way. I would just like to express my strong support for putting a climate action tax or a sustainability tax on the ballot. I think there are a lot of great things that we could fund with the revenue from such a tax, many of which are set as goals in the city's Sustainable Sustainability Action Plan and even a bit in the Comprehensive Plan. That's really all I wanted to say, just to express my strong support for such a measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? The next is Eileen Persicetti. Or Mark?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, this really is Mark and not Eileen. I'm working on her computer tonight. I live at 1402 Taft Place in West Louisville in Ward 1, and I just wanted to concur with the comments from the other two LSAB members who spoke previously. I am interested in seeing us being able to pursue some programs that will help primarily local businesses reduce their costs for putting in improvements to reduce their energy consumption, electrical or natural gas, fossil fuels. And so I think that some kind of a tax is probably going to be necessary for us to do that. I do support the excise tax as the option that was presented by council or by staff because I think their comment that it should be something that's directly related to improve behavior will reduce your cost. I think some of the other funding options don't have that effect, such as the sales tax. So that's pretty much all that I wanted to say about it in support tonight, and I'm amazed that I'm not using up my full three minutes. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mark. Any other members of the public care to comment? All right, seeing that, that takes us back over to council comments and discussion. I'll just start off by saying thank you so much to everybody for working on this. And I think, you know, other council members can correct me, you know, any statements I make here, but I think there's very little doubt that we don't all support sustainability and reducing emissions. We have made many commitments this year and last year, and we need to work very, very hard. It's too important to miss the mark on these things. So I think it's just a matter of understanding, you know, exactly what we're going to go after and how we do it. So in our work plan this year, we have building code changes to make buildings more efficient because buildings are a major source of emissions here in Louisville as transportation. And we've made a number of commitments to our bike paths and to improving options for people. And we continue to advocate for multimodal transportation and electrification. So, you know, there's a lot of really great things happening. And tonight, because of the timing on how we have to get things on the ballot, we really have to talk about it tonight, and then we have to have things finalized really by July for the ballot in November. So the problem that I see here is just a matter of timing and when we would go after funding and for what. So I think perhaps we could give the Sustainability Board a few tasks from the conversation tonight. One would be to study the excise tax option for us further. I think that is really appealing if we were to do a climate tax because it does tie directly to emissions. So you are, you know, charging for the thing you're trying to reduce. I think there could be some more work done for council on that just in surveying why Denver has had some hesitations around that, you know, talking with their Sustainability Department on that and just continuing to build community support around that idea. And then making sure it's clear that there are details in it, right? Like, so for example, if someone's participating in Renewable Connect or Wind Source, you know, would they be charged the excise tax? Or would it be credited back because they've taken actions to reduce their emissions and things like that? So work through the details on the excise tax. And then secondly, to come up with a program list, kind of like Mark Persicetti was talking about, about exactly what we would want to use the funding for. Because if we were able to show people that, you know, we want to do X, Y, and Z with the funding that we raise, I think it would be a lot easier for us to communicate to the community what funds we're looking to raise. Now, I mean, the rest of the council, if everyone's eager to go this year, you know, I twist my arm, but I think there's just some more details to work out, and it could put us on track for a really good conversation for a 2022 excise tax on emissions. If we had some of that groundwork, which I know the Sustainability Board would be awesome in doing. So I'll leave it at that and turn it over to others for comments. Mayor Pretend Maloney?
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. You know, it was interesting. And we had some discussions about the 2021 budget back in July at the Budget Retreat. I was one of those people that said that we should consider something, whatever it's called, Climate Action Tax, whatever, whatever. Because we were at a point where it was with shrinking revenues, it was hard to see that we could, because of COVID, you know, we noticed the business has been hard hit, that we didn't really have any available funding to spend on something. So what I was suggesting is we needed an additional source. So I appreciate the work that Emily has done on this and, you know, and others. I'm sure Katie was involved too, and others have been involved in this. And there's a lot of information in these reports. I went through and read it all, so I very much appreciate all that. I believe we're at a sort of an awkward time when we consider these kind of things. And, you know, COVID has created a lot of awkward things. And, you know, as we look at the impact to the businesses, the impact to the city revenues, the impact to the residents over COVID, I find it an awkward time to be considering this kind of tax. Even though, you know, I believe something like this, some funding mechanism to address the climate and the sustainability issues are very important, I'm just not convinced this is really the best timing for doing that. You know, with COVID, we are still dealing with businesses, you know, running at some smaller percentage of normal. And we're looking at how do we recover? And within the city, we're looking at years of recovery of revenues. And so, you know, that's not just us. I mean, you know, that's the residents as well. So I'm cautious there. But I think the staff report is very good. I agree with Emily. A lot of, it was wide recommendations, a lot of things that we should be addressing. And when I look at this, I would support a climate action tax if we had a clearer vision of how we'd be investing and how it'd have substantial impact on our greenhouse gases. And so that's what, I don't know if we have time to do that this year. You know, as I, as I was listening to the presentation and listening to the comments and the mayor's comments, and I'm looking at our advanced agenda, and almost every meeting, you know, we're dealing with some of the challenges we're currently facing. And I don't know if any of us have the cycles to sort of dig deeper as the mayor was saying, really come up with a solid plan for moving ahead. So while I like the idea, I'm not sure we're ready to move ahead with that. There are things we're doing. The mayor mentioned one. We'll be addressing looking at building code. We know that commercial buildings are a great contributor to our greenhouse gases. And, you know, we need to find a way to do that differently. And so I'm not sure I'm doing a very good job, Emily, of answering all your questions. Is there interest in exploring a tax? I think I agree with the mayor that the timing's not right. I think, you know, potentially 2022 might be the right thing. Are there specific goals? We, as a council, haven't articulated those. I think we all want to reduce greenhouse gases, but I think we have to do more work to be able to articulate what those are. And the other questions are premature to answer. Excise tax may be a way to go, but the rest of the questions to me, until we answer those, I'm not prepared to say. I wouldn't know what the answers to those to be. So this is something that I don't want to let go. I have two more years on council, and I would like to see us somehow make investments that make a difference for the city of Louisville. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say how much I appreciate your comments, Mayor, as well as the Mayor Pretend's comments. I very much support the idea of additional funding for sustainability, for climate action. The, I really want to know, the most important thing to me is to know exactly what we're getting, sort of what the bang for our buck is in terms of greenhouse gas reductions. And I think that's where, looking to the Sustainability Action Board, or sorry, the LSAB, is the right approach. You know, I don't consider myself to be an expert on the exact best ways to reduce greenhouse gases, I should say. And that's why I would look to staff and our, and our experts, our citizen experts on the board to help guide us and identify the projects. Because I think, I think making a case to voters that, you know, we need to spend more money and collect more money on sustainability is something that I'm willing to do. I think it's something that voters very much support. But I also want to know that, that we are making a case that will, where we know exactly what we're paying for. And I realize that we're in sort of the nascent stages of that. So I don't want to, I don't want these comments to come off as critical. I think that the work that we have done or that staff has done, Emily and Katie have done, is really exceptional. But that's, that's the key thing for me in terms of moving forward with this is, is, you know, identifying the projects sort of where our, where our community can really make the biggest difference in the climate crisis. And quite frankly, the projects that we can get done for, you know, that have the biggest impact for the amount of money that we're spending. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll add my thanks and appreciation for the former council comments and also for this work that staff and the Sustainability Advisory Board has done. It's, it's a lot of work, and, but it's going to make a big impact for our climate in Louisville. I also think that the tax is probably best delayed for at least a year. At this point, with all of the results from COVID and then implementing the back tax in January, an additional tax for climate, I think, would just be too extreme for our residents right now. But I'm certainly in favor of it in the future. And as Councilwoman Brown mentioned, I think we need to discuss what exactly the funds are going to be used for, defining more specifically what will, how much money we need and what it's going to go toward. I would like to use it for things that would reduce consumption rather than paying for offsetting in any way. And so I guess that would just be my comments on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lipton? You're muted?
So I am, sorry. So I guess I'm in general agreement from what I've been hearing from the other council members. You know, just going through my list of thinking, I'm not a strong proponent for purchasing recs. I administer a program like that on campus. And to be honest, I think all it does is relieve guilt. It really doesn't reduce energy consumption. And if you want to really reduce our carbon footprint, I don't think buying your way out of it by writing a check to Excel is the right way of doing it. I do believe if we want to make a difference, we need to allocate more funding for programmatic initiatives related to reducing our carbon footprint. Guess I'm not yet convinced that has to be done. Well, I don't know how much that would cost because of, you know, the conversation of costs and benefits, which really, you know, somewhat obscure at this point. And as Pretend Maloney stated, you know, our budget seems to be pretty healthy. And I think we have to look post-COVID. I think we have to look a year or two after this year in getting to something more normalized. I don't think we can, we can hide behind the cloak of COVID forever on things. And I think that, you know, we need to make some budgetary changes, you know, a year from now, you know, to help fund these kind of things. It's something we'll look at. When I look at our reserves, I look at our cash flow, I think we're going to be in pretty good health, pretty good health in a couple of years. And, you know, maybe there'd be some budget flexibility if in fact we, the council finds that this is a high priority, which I believe it is. I'm also very interested in knowing what is going to be happening at the federal level, state level, and regionally over the next two years. Obviously, there's a major change afoot. Lot of interest in reducing carbon footprints. Discussions, again, about cap and trade. You know, all kinds of things that are going to be happening that will impact how we're doing nationally, statewide, as well as a locality. And I would, would like to know more about, have more clarity about what's going on at those. would like to know more about and have more clarity about what's going on at those other levels before we just decide we need to raise taxes in order to have some walking around money and doing good deeds. If we want to have walking around money and doing good deeds, I think we should find it out of the general fund. But we have to know what the policy implications of what's happening at the other levels to really understand what the gap is going to be that we're that we're trying to solve. And and, you know, I had a question for Emily. Emily, I don't want an answer tonight. And maybe it's in the report, I just didn't get it. If we don't do anything by virtue of what Excel is doing and what's happening perhaps at the state level, what is the gap that we're trying to close as a community? And, you know, like I said, I really don't want an answer tonight, but there's a lot of moving parts. And I'm I'm not sure with what Excel has committed to and what the state is doing and everybody else, you know, how how big a gap are we going to have to solve? And I also know that electricity is not the only source of carbon emissions or other things we need to do in the way of transportation auto use and things like that. But I'm, you know, just just curious to understand more about what what the gaps are that.
We can get, we can get that report out to the council from Excel on where they're heading and on what time. So some cities are, it all depends on what year you want to look at, right? Like, do you want to look at next year? Do you want to look at 2030? Do you want to look at 2050? But we'll send you that report and everybody on council.
But it goes beyond Excel. I mean, and then there are aspects of Excel, it's both electric as well as natural gas and, you know, some components, but it goes beyond Excel and what's happening in the way of transportation and other other factors.
Yep, absolutely. So thank you, everybody. Really great comments tonight. So it sounds like there's consensus that we want to take bold action around reducing carbon emissions. But the funding side of it, we're just, there's some hesitancy from the council on the funding side on whether we need to raise new funds or use existing funds or how we might raise funds. So it sounds like there was good consensus around giving or asking if the Sustainability Board would please help us by helping us with a bold vision on what investments they would like to see us put money into that would reduce greenhouse gas emissions. I was trying to paraphrase you, Mayor Protem Maloney, so if I did that incorrectly, please correct me. So what investments would we want money to be spent on and how would they reduce greenhouse gas emissions? And then if I understood the rest of the group, if we understand what that dollar, estimated dollar amount is, that'll help us understand if we need new revenue or not to cover that dollar amount. Is that fair of the conversation? I see some nodding. And then the last piece would be just if the Sustainability Board and staff could explore over the course of the next year or so, just the excise tax further to understand how that might work, the details of how that might work. So it sounds like there's not interest in going this fall, although I I will just say, just for conversation's sake, a couple of council members said they didn't think the community would support a tax this fall. I think the community would support a tax this fall. But I think we would be better off putting together a really good program that we can, that we can show the community that we're making really good progress in reducing emissions. And we can then say, here's what your money's being spent on, and we're making really good progress. But I, you know, Denver passed 0.25% sales tax last fall overwhelmingly. And our our community passed a back tax overwhelmingly and continues to respond very positively on surveys to things to reduce carbon emissions. So I know the community would be supportive of us taking bold action. And so I think we just need to keep working toward it so that, once we have the program put together, that we can fund it. Does that make sense to other folks on council? Did I leave anybody's key points out in summary? City Manager Balser, do you need any more direction on this agenda item?
No, this is great. Thank you. Appreciate the direction.
Thank you, and I'll call Laura, or Laura will call me tomorrow. And we'll see if the Sustainability Board will be willing to help us out on that project list. Thank you all. That takes us to our next agenda item, which is Discussion Direction of 2021 Potential Ballot Measure for Transportation Master Plan Implementation. We will have a staff presentation from Megan Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Spolsman and City Council. Let me just share a nice screen here so that you can see the presentation. Okay, are you able to see that?
Yes, we are.
Great. Okay. All right. Okay. This is Megan Davis, Deputy City Manager, and I'm joined this evening by several people who have been involved in these discussions internally over the past several months and also the past several years as well. Of course, City Manager Balser and Public Works Director Kirk Howers on the line, Parks Recreation and Open Space Director Nathan Mosley, and Director of Planning and Budgeting, Planning and Building Safety Rob Zaccaro, and then in addition, Finance Director Kevin Watson, who, of course, has been instrumental in helping us look at financial implications. So this evening, we're going to be discussing the possibility of a 2021 ballot issue related to transportation funding. So really, our goal tonight is to determine City Council's level of interest in 2021, in a 2021 transportation ballot measure. We'll go through a little bit of background of the TMP and provide some information about projects, potential projects, funding sources, and scenarios. So just a little bit of history. I want to share some of this information about the Transportation Master Plan. It, the Transportation Master Plan represents a long-range planning effort that describes baseline conditions of the city's transportation network, establishes overarching transportation goals, transportation policies, projects, and programs. It was passed by City Council in 2019. And it's really anchored in other city plans, including the Comprehensive Plan, the Sustainability Plan, and other more kind of regional plans that the city had developed. We developed this with extensive community outreach. And so there were numerous different types of engagement and input opportunities by the community with city advisory boards and commissions, regional partners, staff. And really, over the course of the, you know, year and a half, got extensive input on what the community's goals are around transportation and also what projects they're interested in seeing to complete those goals. So I wanted to share a little bit about the goals of the TMP. They provide a comprehensive framework for the broader vision of the transportation network. They're high level, and they indicate kind of the desired outcomes around transportation investments for a transportation system. They're included in your packet, and they're outlined in this graphic. They include things like safety and efficiency, a cohesive system with elements that support all modes, such as walking, biking, transit, driving, and and recreation use. They consider local and regional travel, as well as new technologies, mobility options, and access for people of all ages and abilities, complete streets that enhance our enhance our livability and reflect our community character, investments that support economic opportunities, and that improve the environment and the community health. I think it's important to take time to reflect on these goals because if council decides to move forward, we would want to make sure that any future discussions about transportation and transportation investments tie back to the goals, which reflect the community input and the needs of the broader community. So this map shows two things. Right now, I'm going to talk a little bit about implementation or progress that we've made on the Transportation Master Plan. We've already moved forward with implementation of several projects in the in the Transportation Master Plan. We were able to successfully integrate the goals that we just went through into our already planned transportation projects and also into routine maintenance efforts in order to enhance the system. So the completed, some of the examples of the completed projects are those in in progress include the South Boulder Road crossing improvements, at-grade improvements for pedestrian safety, which have occurred citywide on close to 30 different locations across the city. We've got some identified here. The 104th Street Regional Trail Connector, which is going to provide a connection between our two busiest regional trails in Boulder County and here in southeast Boulder County, the Coal Creek and Rock Creek Trails, and then the State Highway 42 corridor study. These are really significant improvements that we think indicate our strong support for the Transportation Master Plan as a guiding document and really moving forward with implementing the projects. You know, this isn't a plan that's just been sitting on the shelf. And we don't intend for it to be moving forward either. So future investments, we have average annual investments in paving. You you heard a presentation a few weeks ago about our kind of upcoming this year and future plans for the paving management program. And the Public Works Department's done an excellent excellent job leveraging those opportunities to implement TMP, TMP goals and projects as they work for, move forward with the paving. And then we also have capital funding identified and budgeted for for our 2021, 2022 budget. So we will, we are committed to continuing to invest in ongoing transportation system improvements. There are some larger project investments that may be difficult to accomplish. And some of the amenities that were identified in the Transportation Master Plan, such as underpasses, new bikeways, multimodal paths, major corridor improvements, maybe slower to complete due to the project costs and financial complaint, financial constraints. If City Council is interested in expediting any of these projects, other funding measures should be considered. So we do have in the packet on page 46, a an extensive table that outlines some of the high priority projects, kind of the more costly projects that would not be likely to be fully funded without additional funding, or they would take a more significant amount of time to achieve over the course of several years. These include things like pedestrian underpasses, multimodal improvements, roadway improvements, first and last mile, and transit and rail investments. And again, on this map, you can also see some of the unfunded high priority projects, which maps out kind of geographically, you can see where the projects are distributed throughout the city and reflected on the table that I mentioned on page 46. Also, you can see that the projects that are included on that table reflect transportation users of all types and multimodal needs across the system. So we have outlined a, you know, a a number of large projects, 12 projects, and also some matched funding for significant State Highway 42 corridor improvements totaling about $76 million. So that, you know, it's a, it's a big price take for all of these projects to make these investments. As you know, and as I've indicated in the memo, these these costs are estimates. Design for the majority of these projects has not been completed. And so we don't have the level of design necessary to have refined costs at this point. That'll take some investment and some time to complete that, you know, any level of design to get more precise numbers. But we did use what we think are conservative estimates and reflect what we've been experiencing with other similar projects and what we've seen in the region. We also would need to consider staff impacts. If we did move forward with something that would sort of front the construction of many large transportation capital improvement projects, it would likely require additional staff or consulting assistance to be able to complete those projects in a timely fashion. And then we also would want to consider project cost escalation. You know, what we're seeing is at least 5% per year. And would also want to recognize that these projects, even if you did a ballot issue and decided to ask voters to bond on funding, we would, it would still take, you know, maybe five, seven, something like that, years to complete the projects. We couldn't get them all done within a matter of just a few years. So those are other funding considerations for you all. Similar to your conversation around climate tax for sustainability funding, there are different funding sources that you can could consider. There are some non-city sources that we do expect will potentially or could possibly come our way in the coming years. There's discussions right now about statewide transportation funding in the state legislature. We don't know what exactly what that'll look like or what the viability of those funds will be in 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 passing legislature or what that might mean for us. Based on the conversations, if funding does go to the Colorado Department of Transportation to fund their tenure project list, State Highway 42 is currently on that list, so we could potentially see some funding there. We know that there's federal and state tip funding that goes through Dr. Cog, and that process is coming up. Federal infrastructure funding, you know, everything we're hearing is that the newly confirmed Secretary of Transportation Buttigieg is verbalizing a commitment to multimodal investments. And if there is some type of federal infrastructure funding, there could potentially be some funding, you know, coming for some of the projects that we have on our list. And then Boulder County has been talking about a transportation ballot measure. We have not gotten word of whether or not they plan to move forward with that or not. And of course, grant funding. And then we also lay out some of the potential city generating sources, like existing tax revenue, potentially bonding on existing tax revenue, sales tax revenue, property tax revenue, again, potentially bonding on sales or property tax revenue, and then some type of transportation maintenance fee or utility fee for transportation. All of those, I would just reiterate that we would have to do some further refinement and analysis. And so that's part of what we're looking for from you tonight if you were to want to move forward. And we've also laid out some scenarios that really gives just some details about the approximate tax rate and approximate revenue impact that could be achieved over a number of years. Again, these are really for illustrative purposes, to give you sort of a scale of what you might be able to, you know, generate and accomplish at different levels. Kind of just gives you a rough idea of what you might capture under either of these scenarios. Staff is not recommending any particular scenario. Again, these are just for you to get, think a little bit about what the options might be. We have laid out several questions for for council. And, you know, just generally, is City Council interested in further exploration of a transportation tax in 2021? And if so, how much funding would you like to generate? What projects identified through the Transportation Master Process are of interest to be included in a funding package? What tax options and structures would you like staff to further explore? And any additional information and research? So that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer questions, I'm sure, as are other team members.
Thank you very much for that great presentation. That takes us to the public comment portion of this agenda item this evening. If any members of the public would like to provide feedback or ask questions or comment on this agenda item, please raise your hand at this time. If you've used your computer to log in, there's a raise hand button at the bottom of the panel. And if you've dialed in by phone, you can dial star nine, and we'll see a hand appear for you. All right, seeing then that takes us back to council discussion, questions and comments. Any council member questions, comments, or discussion on this agenda item? Mayor Protem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you, Megan, for the presentation and and all the other staff that worked on this. You know, the Transportation Master Plan was something that was initiated in the middle of my tenure on being on City Council. And when the report got done after, as as Megan said, extensive, you know, involvement by the city staff and by the citizens and so forth, I think it's a good document, and it was approved by a 7-0 vote. So I think that's, I'm going to lead with that because I think that's very, very important. You know, the the very first tenant of the TMP is safety and efficiency. And I I think we want to be cognizant of that. When I, when I look at the map on page 205 of the report, it lists a number of projects that are there. And and I would say that they all have merit. There's no question that they all have all have merit. Some of them, I mean, there's a lot of them, actually, if you look at that 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 map, that are underpasses. And there's alternatives to that. There are at-grade things. And as one of our citizens wrote, you could even have crossing guards supporting people getting across if if safety and efficiency are really the goal here. But the part of the report that Megan did, I think, is important for us to acknowledge. And before I do that, though, I want to say that, you know, I've been asking friends and family who are from outside Lewisville, what do you think about the transportation in Lewisville? And and people, especially from Denver, are kind of amazed at our our road system. It's in good shape, and part of that is because the leadership of some members who are still It's in good shape and part of that is because the leadership of some members who are still on city council, who in two thousand and fifteen moved the budget to have a paving program of four, five million a year. Over the last few years, we've also added additional money into transportation, up to two million dollars. Those are things I think we need to continue. I think they're very important. But we need to prioritize what is the most important thing. And to me, that's Highway forty two. And knowing that Highway forty two is a state highway, it is, I believe, in the top ten list for C D O D S for the state. So there's, there's funding available there. Hopefully through this next iteration, and hopefully there'll be funding from federal for infrastructure funding for that as well. So we look at priorities to, that's a priority. And I would like to envision that we will be looking at these more of a pay as you go as opposed to an additional tax. So, I mean, that's, that's my theme with this. I do think that there's still room in the capital budget. I, I know that the city manager might have a little bit different perspective on that and I respect that. But as we start looking at what are the most important things we should be doing as a city, transportation is an important one and we need to find a way of prioritizing that against all of the projects. So if some of these underpasses are that important, then we need to find a way to fund those. But I'd like to see it doing a pay as you go approach to doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So not seeing any other hands, I'll chime in. I, I have slightly different opinion. So the transportation master plan had a tremendous amount of public input. And we are working on making sure that we have a great system and that it's, works for all ages and abilities and that people have the ability to walk or bike or get around in, in a safe and efficient manner. And so the projects we're talking about tonight really are amenities. There are things that people have asked for time and time again that we don't have a way to fund right now. So Highway forty two, I'm hopeful that we'll have state funding, but it's in the unfunded portion of the tenure list. So I think it's likely to have funding, but not complete funding. And we would most likely have to bring significant dollars forward to match the state funding. But all the projects on the list other than Highway forty two are, are sort of these amenity projects. I do agree forty two is one of these that we, we really have to do. It's not an amenity. But these underpasses, like during the small area plan, the underpass at Main Street and South Boulder Road was brought up dozens and dozens of times by residents. And so to me, asking the voters for a way to fund it is a way for them to decide whether or not to pay for it. I mean, so if, if it's a time where the voters say, we don't want to fund these amenities, we're fine without them. Like we can just cross it at grade, then that's fine and that's an acceptable decision to make. But if people continue to say to council, why don't we have an underpass here? Why don't we have an underpass there in Steel Ranch? You hear from folks about the Bullhead Gulch, they were all sort of convinced by the developer that that would be an underpass that connected to the trail system. And the cost of that just far exceeded what the developer had envisioned and we're not able to do it without additional funding. So I, I feel that at minimum, we should ask staff to continue looking at bonding against existing revenue and bring forward that option for further consideration to ask the voters about. So if you look at our capital projects fund, we dedicate a little over half of it to, to maintenance, to road maintenance of facilities. And a little over half of it to sort of, or a little under half of it to sort of discretionary things from year to year. We heard the staff report that we're seeing five percent construction inflation. In some years, we've had staff tell us it's ten percent or fifteen percent construction inflation. And interest rates are very low right now. They will not stay low forever. So we could bond against that existing revenue over a period of time to get some projects done in the upfront period. And overall, it could cost the residents less, less money. So I think that option is worth exploring at a minimum. But I'm interested in continuing the discussion on sort of a hybrid approach of looking at that, just bond against existing revenue, seeing how much we could get done on the list by doing that. And maybe having council prioritize the highest priority amenities against the others. But then also I think it's worth continuing the discussion on a potential property tax measure to just see if the voters want to fund other projects on the list or not. And using that as information. And then when people come to us and say, why isn't there an underpass at forty two and south? We could say, because we can't afford it, like the voters didn't want to pay for it. And we're not going to do it at this time, you know, we would need additional revenue. So I think we should keep the discussion going and, and narrow the field so that we're not keeping all of these different options on the table. But rather, we should take some time to reduce the list down a bit in scope to just the highest priority amenities. And then talk about if any of these funding options should be carried for, for the, forward for further discussion this year. Councilmember Brown and then councilmember Lipton.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I, I, I think that, you know, the continuing the discussion is, is, I think in this particular case, what I would prefer. I would prefer to continue to think about different options for funding, both bonding against existing revenue or some, some form of tax. I think that, you know, this is an opportunity where, when, because residents come to us with additional requests for amenities. You know, it, it ultimately is up to them in this particular case. And I'm happy to, to continue to talk about a, a ballot initiative, a potential ballot initiative with the idea that we would be ultimately leaving the decision to the voter as to whether or not they wanted to, to move forward with, with the tax. Thank you.
Councilmember Lipton. You're muted.
Of course, I'm muted. There are elements of what was said that I, I do agree with. I mean, I, I agree with, I would like to try to see if we can do more of a pay as you go approach to these things. I don't think you can build your way out of this. There isn't enough money in the world to satisfy everybody's desire for transportation improvements. And everybody has their own priority list. I, I am intrigued about using existing revenue streams and bond against those revenue streams. You know, particularly where interest rates are today. So to me, that's kind of a combination of what both Mayor Protem was saying, you know, we're basically using existing revenues, it's pay as you go, and what the mayor was suggesting. Going further than that, one of my great points of hesitancy at this point going to the ballot is that our history of estimating for these kind of improvements, and it's not anybody's particular fault, is a bit disconcerting because the, the numbers never come close to what we project. And especially with some of these involving Burlington Northern and things that we just don't have control about. I don't want to be in a position of like where R T D got with Fast Trax. So we have this really, really attractive list. We put it to the voters. And then we find out we're cutting out underpasses and other improvements because there just isn't going to be enough money. And that's just the, the way these kind of projects go. And now, can we do a better job in estimating? Sure. But that's going to involve a larger investment, both of time and money to, you know, ha- have engineers and consultants spend more focus on this and give us better estimates. And then trying to estimate, estimate inflationary factors, looking out for five or 10 years. None of that's easy, but it takes a lot of investment on the front end to do it and do it right. And then you have something you have confidence in that if you want to take to the voters, you can take to the voters. But you don't want to overpromise and underdeliver because that, that would be a really bad thing for us to be doing. So if you're going to go to the ballot, I think we need quite a bit more work on scoping and estimating and all that. And then it might be ripe to take to the voters. I know, I don't think we're going to get there in three months.
So councilmember Lipton, I just, I'm going to ask staff for clarification on one thing. So my understanding is if we bond against existing revenue, we still would need to go to the voters because of taper constraints. But City Attorney Kelly's not on tonight, but I'll unfairly ask city manager Balsor if that's correct.
Yeah, and Kevin probably knows the answer to this too, but I don't actually think that you, that you do, but you might want to. So Megan or Kevin, do you remember?
All right, yeah, this is Kevin. I, I do believe you have to do that under because you have a long-term financial obligation. Now, there's other ways that you can look at this. Rather than a bond, you could do a leasing concept, like certificate of participation or something like that, where you wouldn't be legally required. But as, as the city manager said, you might want to do it anyway.
Thank you for that clarification. Mayor Protem Maloney.
Yes, Mayor, I, I appreciate your comments. I, I don't think that we disagree. I think you, you know, may have a, a better view of, of doing this with the bonding against existing, existing revenues. I didn't say it that way. I like the way you, you stated that and I could certainly support that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion that people want to bring up? I might point us around a couple of topic areas to refine it further. So, I mean, we don't have to have any final decision tonight, but we do need to narrow the field so that the next time we talk about this as a group, you know, we know whether we're on track or not on track. As councilmember Lipton pointed out, it's, it's really a tight timeline every year to get to where we need to be for the ballot. So we need to start refining the field. So it sounded like the next conversation there is interest from maybe all the members in understanding more about bonding exist, bonding against existing revenue and what that could look like. Our folks, so if we do that, and just from back of the envelope, kind of calculations that I've looked at, you know, with existing obligations, we couldn't even do a quarter of the list. So do folks want to identify prop, like maybe tiers of projects? Or would folks be willing tonight to have a discussion of how to narrow a dollar amount? If we're not willing to talk about specific projects and then like types of criteria we would use to figure out how we would narrow a project list? So if, if we're not entertaining new revenue, you know, we do need to narrow the field of what we're talking about bonding for. I, I think councilmember Lipton kind of started down this path around, there might be projects on here that are so risky that we wouldn't want to commit by ballot measure. So like projects involving the railroad. So if folks don't want to try to narrow the field or narrow the scope by dollar amount, then I would ask if there are other sources of revenue folks want to have brought back for consideration? Beyond just bonding against existing revenue? Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, I think, I mean, one of the things that we can think about is, is since people, you know, that we hear about particularly focused on, I think Mayor Protem Maloney mentioned Highway forty two. I certainly appreciate that. Maybe there's state dollars that can match that. Then, then the next thing you hear most about is, is underpasses. Obviously, there's a number of underpasses on near Steel Ranch, South Boulder Road. But also the Dillon Underpass that's identified on here, on the, that would help to connect the, the, like the, the trail on the power lines. You know, so you could, you could, you could start to scope it in terms of the type of project in, in that regard. But I don't know what the, the total of something like that would look like and whether or not we would need additional revenue. But, but I would be interested in thinking about, you know, some sort of external revenue source, at least to just keep options open. So a narrow, I'm, I'm okay with narrowing the list. But I would like to, to think about, you know, what are the things we could afford with existing revenue? You know, what are the things that we could afford with a larger, with a little, you know, a little larger bucket? Even if we don't go, you know, for a full option C or whatever it's called in the packet. You know, the large, large revenue sources.
Thank you. Councilmember Lipton.
I'd like to ask Kurt and Rob, they're thinking about how accurate these numbers are at this point? And what it might take in a way of time and money to actually get better precision?
Director Cole.
Yeah, I think for Highway forty two Tuesday, we're proving the corridor project to get it to fifty, fifteen percent. So that cost, I think, is like six hundred thousand. And we're going to be working on that over the next several months. So that would dial in. So that's the known right there. But I think Highway forty two is probably the biggest guess. After that, the underpasses, I think they're a little more straightforward. We know most of the underpasses we've costed out ourselves or with consultants have been around eight million bucks for complex ones, like at Main Street, going under a railroad at a skew. And we know we just built one that was more simple up on Highway forty two. And I think that one was more like two and a half million. So I think we're being pretty conservative when we're saying eight million dollars each. And a lot of these are more straightforward ones in, in less challenging areas. So I feel good about the underpass. I think they're conservative. But you certainly could spend money to, to make that tighter if you wanted to. So that would be my opinion on forty two and underpasses. I think we'll know a lot more on forty two in three to six months.
Could I, could I follow up, Kurt?
Yeah.
Those projects that involve B N S F. How much of a wild card is B N S F's involvement and changing requirements, I guess?
Once we get their buy-in on the design, the requirements don't really change. So the, with the challenge with B N S F is the scheduling. They don't approve quickly the plan sets. And then to get the track shut down to do the installation, you never know when you're going to get the track shut down. So it's really not so much on the design side, but the construction side is where it kills you.
Have you taken any of that into account in these budget estimates?
I mean, the railroad project would be the Steel Ranch Underpass, which we had a consultant design it for the, the Grand Bridge Plan. And that was like six to eight million. So the costs are in the similar ballpark now, probably. You add ten or twenty percent for fluff. And then I, I still couldn't tell you on schedule. It's, you're, you're, it'll take you one to two years to get it into the ground with the schedules I've seen from them. So if you apply another five percent on top of each year, then, you know, you're probably thirty percent of overhead just waiting around, if I had to guess. Could, could be.
What about the South Boulder Road and Main Street Underpass? I mean, there was issues related to B N S F utilities, you know, rights of way, things like that.
Man, that one, I, there's so much going on in that one. I don't know if anyone could nail a schedule on that one. It would probably take three to five years to pick through all that. You've got ditches in there, railroads. I feel like that would be a long delivery timeline to get through it all.
But what about the cost estimate? I mean, it kind of relates to delivery.
Oh, that was another one. We had a consultant tell us that was like, I think it was like seven or eight million. Well, actually, let's, let me back up. Too many underpasses in my head. When we did a study for the South Boulder Road Connectivity Plan, which was about two years ago at this point, we started maybe three years ago with looking at an underpass that skewed under the railroad. But when we did the connectivity study and we reviewed various options with the council, we actually ended up with a design that was on the, so I'm at the intersection of Main and South Boulder. We had a design that we shoehorned in on the west side of the intersection. So technically, I think we're outside of the right of way. And it really, the Main Street one doesn't have B N S F issues anymore. But you'll have an issue with gaining land control on the southwest corner. And then possibly the dentist office. and then possibly the dentist office there on the north side of the intersection. So there's no BNSF issue, it's just getting the
Right of way?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what about this? So it sounds like there's interest in having another discussion around this and definitely looking at what we think we could reasonably raise in a bond measure against existing revenue as one piece of information for next time. And then maybe we asked to kind of look at three groupings. One could be just Highway 42 and all the associated projects. So that would be Highway 42 and the Highway 42 underpasses that would enable the bikeway on Highway 42 and some of the connectivity as a package, a package that's just sort of like an underpass package. I swear somebody said a third one that I was going to try to put together into it. So maybe it's just those two scenarios, sort of like an underpass package and a Highway 42 package. Just to understand the dollar amount of those kind of two scopes of things, and then understand what bonding against existing revenue would get us. And then some information on a property tax of what it would take to close the gap on either of those, for further, just for discussion sake. Does that seem like reasonable information to look forward to in the next conversation? And before I go to you, Councilmember Fahy, City Manager Bossar, and just be, you know, as direct as you're comfortable with, but is that too broad yet, or would we need to narrow it further?
Uh, you know, I, I think the key is, are we just looking at property tax? That would be really helpful. I mean, we still have a lot of work to do with our financial advisors to understand exactly how much can be raised, what our expectations are around that. So that'll take a little bit of time, and then it'll just come fast and furious, and we'll have to make some decisions pretty quickly, which is fine. We'll just, so it would be great to narrow the revenue source.
The type of revenue?
Yeah.
Okay, and so I had proposed, just this is back to council, so start thinking about, and we'll go to Councilmember Fahy for any points she'd like to raise first, but then think about. I think it would make sense to just pick one of the revenue sources rather than have staff carry a bunch of them forward. And so to me, property tax, because it's much less elastic and much more predictable. And we're also pretty high on our sales taxes right now. Seems like the one to carry forward as a consideration. But start thinking about that so other folks can weigh in, and we figure out how to narrow the field there. Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to comment. At first, I do like the idea of keeping it as a property tax. I think in addition to being more consistent, it's also a little more equitable for all of the property owners in town. Second, I'm wondering if we can get some information about how, what projects would generate the most in matching funds or some kind of assistance fund, either from the state, federal levels, what Dr. Cog is going to finance or whatever, because that could impact how much a project actually costs us to put through. But I do agree with the priority being Highway 42.
Other council members have comments? Mayor Proton Maloney?
You know, my initial reaction to your question, Mayor, about funding leads me to property tax, and I'm also reminding myself that, you know, the businesses in town which pay four times the rate that residents pay don't vote on these things. So we'll be making a decision that businesses will be paying a lot more property tax in order to be able to fund this. I don't know if I'm saying I'm a forerunner against it, but I want to make sure that we, as a council members, are aware that we have an unrepresented business community that does not vote on these things, and will be making a decision to increase their taxes. The other thing that's there is transportation fee, and honestly, I I don't remember what, well enough, what's in the staff report to know how that would be calculated. But I do lean towards property tax first to answer your question.
Thank you. Just so, I don't, I don't, I'm not an expert in this at all, but the way I understood it is there are a few municipalities. I think Boulder has applied a transportation fee to people's utility bill. You theoretically could probably do it through car registration to folks in town so that there's a fee collected to fund transportation projects rather than going to the voters. Like you just apply it as a fee, and then you don't have to ask the ballot question. So I think that's sort of what that avenue is about. I would rather ask so that we could get the feedback from people if this is, these amenities are too expensive and they can't afford it. So even if we went that fee route, I guess I would ask the voters in this case, since it is for amenities, which sort of isn't the reason why people usually go the fee route.
Well, yeah, so I think that, I appreciate your perspective. I would not want to create a fee without a vote. You know, I think we have to have representation. If people are going to be paying a fee or a tax, then I would only be comfort, have comfort if we asked the voters that. Thank you very much for my time.
Thank you very much for your comments. They're fantastic. So folks are okay narrowing the field? So at the next meeting, nobody will ask the question, why isn't sales tax on here as a consideration, right? We're all going to remember that we narrowed the field tonight. Is that right?
Mayor, can I just ask, Megan or Kevin, do you have any comments or anything you want to add specifically around financing options?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Megan. I don't have anything either. I think this provides clarity around the potential project groupings that you would like us to bring more detail back, as well as the potential revenue and funding options. So thank you.
My recollection is related to sales taxes with the recreation center project, we use a sales tax revenue stream to pay for the additional maintenance and operational expenses.
Yep, that's correct.
There was some mention in this report that if you do all these things, there are going to be additional operational maintenance expenses that you have to consider to fund. I don't know if you could do that through a designated property tax. But maybe that's something you can look at and come back to us just to find out what those options are, you know, how you can do that. I also, my recollection from the rec center is I think we said the average cost per residential per house would be a hundred and thirty dollars, and that raised thirty million. Interest rates were a bit higher, so you know, if that all scales up proportionally, you know, I'm thinking maybe to raise sixty million dollars, you know, you're looking at about two hundred and fifty dollars or so per household. That, that is a lot of money for a lot of households. So we'll see what the numbers are, but I, I think we got to be sensitive to what the burden would be, and then as Proten Maloney said, you know, businesses would be a multiple of that. So we'd have to look at what the impact would be to the business community. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's, I think all of those considerations are really important to be considerate of and sensitive to. And I think before we start putting out, you know, how much per house it would be, we needed, I think the number we used was for a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar house on the rec center. I think we need to get more serious on this one and not use that number. I don't think four fifty is fair to people when they paid a property tax bill. I think the median household property tax bill is on a higher number than that now. Just to modernize it, I'm saying to today's numbers. And then I, you know, we, if we do some kind of hybrid, we're using existing revenue, then of course it would drop the bill for new revenue costs, right? So we'll just need to see all that detail. Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, there's a similar comment. I think that, you know, I recently read that the average home in Lewisville was selling for over eight hundred thousand dollars. So I think we do need to raise it to whatever the realistic average is. And it certainly isn't, you know, what we use for the rec center. And we need to be, you know, honest about it if we're going to promote this thing honestly.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Yeah, Mayor, this is Heather. I would just add too, I think we, one of the things we'd we probably talked to bond council to understand how you would ask the questions as well, and what that means in terms of maintenance. Is it one, two, those kinds of things? Try to get some preliminary information on that as we look at financial scenarios based around property tax, so.
Thank you. And so with that, City Manager, would you, you, in the, in the next discussion or in one of the subsequent discussions, we would have a better understanding of maintenance on these projects? Because like, for example, Highway 42, we're maintaining it now. So would we say we need to come up with a hundred percent of new maintenance dollars for Highway 42? I mean,
Yeah, I don't know. We'd have to go back and we'll, we'll look. I mean, I think, I think some of that will, I mean, we, again, we are doing some work on the fifteen percent design. So I think the thought was through that process, we'd probably have a better understanding of long-term maintenance potentially, depending on the scenarios. But so we'll, again, it won't be perfect, but we'll, we'll come back to you with our thoughts around maintenance as well.
All right. Thank you. That's really helpful. And we have a comment from Councilmember Lipton. You're muted.
I'd ask one more question of Heather or Megan, and I think there's mentioned, mentioned in the report, but what is the, if we end up trying to fund Highway 42, what's consequence of that in terms of getting matching grants or, you know, participation by the feds or the state later on, or as part of the process?
Just to clarify my comments, I don't think I was ever, and I don't think the staff report ever represented funding the entire 42 project. I think this was about raising our portion of it, but yeah, I mean, if folks want to contemplate paying the whole thing, I think that's a different dollar amount than what was in the packet.
That was staff's intention as well.
Yeah, so we funded our portion, and then nothing happened, see, from the state, county, or federal level. Then we collect the money, but we just don't spend it, or we spend it on other projects?
Also, like, the way that it is broken out in the packet, there's a few underpasses. So like those, the state probably wouldn't participate in, so like we could start on the underpasses. And if we told the state, I, I bet we could get it in writing, but I think if we told the state, we have eight million dollars for Highway 42, it would jump the queue.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just add, yeah, I think that's a great point, Mayor, and we can also, you know, depending on, through the work of the study, you know, if there's phases or there's incremental pieces that we could do that we could assign dollars to, if we don't have the full complete phase. I think we've always assumed that there's potentially some interim phases that we can do as well. And so what that might look like, and that might be an opportunity to spend money as well, potentially.
All right, and then I'll just go back to Director Davis and just ask if there are other things you want us to discuss around project list or funding, or anything that you think we should have a little bit more conversation on tonight? I think this is adequate direction for us to bring back more information around these specific areas. And then, you know, we probably, based on those scenarios and options, we'll have to do further, you know, refinement. But I think this gives us good direction at this point. Thank you so much. Thanks, everybody, for the great discussion on that one this evening. So that takes us to our next order of business, which is approval of a request for proposals for consultant services to develop updates for the Old Town Overlay zoning regulations. Director Zakara, would you like to tell us about this or hand it over to someone who will?
Sure, I'll go ahead and go through the brief presentation here. So staff is presenting to City Council this evening our draft request for proposal for consultant services. So this is to review the Old Town Overlay and then contemplate some amendments to the overlay. So hopefully you can all see my screen here. Just a little background on the Old Town Overlay. It was first adopted in nineteen ninety-five, and it, it's really intended to help preserve character within Old Town. And it really, it really relates to the residential character of Old Town. So of course, this doesn't include the commercial area. We have a separate set of design standards for the commercial area, so it's really the residential areas in Old Town. And we have a series of regulations currently in the overlay, you know, related to maximum floor areas, building footprints. We have some roof pitch requirements. We also have some incentives for historic preservation. That's, again, is intended to make sure that new development, redevelopment, isn't impacting that old, the old town, small town character. We've certainly heard more and more concerns, I think, over the impact of new development. And so council has in their work plan for this year, this project. And so staff has asked for some funds to hire a consultant to help with this review. So again, we have the RFP for you to review, make sure that looks like it's going in a good direction as far as the scope goes. Really what we, as staff, put this together, there's a couple of components. I think that there's an analysis component, and then there's the public outreach component. They're both very important to this, but I think the evaluation is important too, to start with, and then kind of blend that with the public input. Really what we want to do is really understand kind of the patterns of historic development, the patterns of new development under the current code, and kind of see how they interact. So there's a lot of, I think, architectural study that needs to be done, again, both on kind of the historic housing stock and new development that's taken place under the Old Town Overlay, and really try to figure out where the issues are. Of course, we need to engage the community pretty broadly and extensively to also understand what their desires are for that. But ultimately, this would lead to a series of recommendations for adjustments to that zoning code to try to address some of those issues. And so we kind of want to go into it, again, kind of with an open mind, and try to figure out from an architectural standpoint, what would make the most sense, and really what are the issues of concern, and how is the zoning playing into that or influencing that? From a public engagement standpoint, you know, throughout the life of this project, we're hoping we'll have more flexibility, but we're assuming that there's going to be some public health restrictions. We definitely, so we have, we've put some language in the RFP about that. We certainly want the project to meet our equity, diversity, and inclusionary goals. So we have put that in the RFP as well. So whatever consultant we're working with, we will put together plans that consider that for public outreach. And then, again, of course, what we would end up with are, with this consultant, is a draft ordinance that we would run through the the approval process with planning commission and city council. We're anticipating a minimum of three broad public outreach opportunities, a lot of engagement beyond that. And then time for planning commission and city council to review drafts of the proposal, and of course, have the adoption hearings as well. So that's the, the scope of the RFP in a nutshell. We'd like to get input and hopefully approval of the RFP either as drafted, or if you want to have some amendments to it, we can discuss those as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Director Zakara. So this is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on this agenda item tonight. If folks have things they'd like to tell us, this would be the time for that. If you've used your computer to log in, you can raise your hand by clicking the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen. If you've dialed in by your phone, you can dial star nine, and we'll see a raised hand appear on your behalf. All right, seeing them, that takes us back to council questions, comments, and discussion. Councilmembers? Mayor Proton Maloney?
I don't want to be first.
Well, someone else needs to raise their hand then.
I feel like I create myself as a target, but that's okay. Rob, thank you very much for the presentation. I'm in support of the RFP that you've put together. My questions are really sort of, what are these, what are the potential policy things that should come alongside this? You know, I know you talked about a number of the aspects of the RFP. But one question I have, and this may not be a good question, and maybe you can give me better, better questions. But, you know, one of the things I think about, right, is we have the incentive program and the Historic Preservation Fund, you know, as part of this, and should we be looking at that at the same time from a policy perspective to say, you know, we can do these things that, you know, create restrictions or so forth? I mean, one of the things I'm concerned about, and we hear about from residents in Ward One and Ward Three that, you know, cover this area, is, you know, a lot of, some of these houses are being raised. And, you know, some people see value in these homes. And if we had a more generous incentive program, would that influence? And if we had a more generous incentive program, would that influence a different outcome? And so that, I may not have stated it very well, Rob, but I, I think you get my gist. Are there policy things that we should be considering that fit with this direction?
Director Zakara?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of things that we could consider. You know, we currently have, so there's our financial incentives through the Historic Preservation Program. So we could always revisit those. And that would probably be mostly separate from this effort. But we could change or raise the financial incentives for landmarking. The, we're actually working with the Historic Preservation Commission on a concept of perhaps a conservation easement, which is a little bit different than a full landmarking that might have some financial incentives. So we are working on some additional potential tools for residential preservation. And so, you know, I think you might see that later this year with the recommendation from Historic Preservation Commission, if we work through that. Within the Old Town Overlay itself, we do have currently density incentives. So we, you get more floor, if you, we have a facade preservation, and I think that needs a relook and some work the way it's currently written, but it might be a good tool if changed or amended in some way. But there are density bonuses and then a, a higher density bonus if you actually landmark. So that'll be part of this review. As far, and I, of course, there's a balance between the impact of, of having more structure, more development on a property verse kind of that community character standpoint. So I think we will be looking at that. And again, I think it's just all a balance and trying to find that right balance and kind of threading that needle where, where, you know, where the community wants to be right now. You know, there's certainly things we can do that are a little bit more complex tools than we have now from a zoning standpoint. I don't want to, again, presume what we would do, but there are things such as bulk planes, you know, daylight planes and things like that that could be considered in addition to our current standards.
Okay. Well, I, I think you get to just, I, I for one, as a council member, support, you know, considering some of these other things alongside this. I wasn't suggesting it was part of the RFP, but, you know, maybe concurrently, we could consider some of these things. So thank you for your comments, Rob. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Just not seeing any other hands up right now. So just to frame the conversation, I'll move. We approve the request for proposals for consultant services to develop updates to the Old Town Overlay zoning regulations.
Second.
Thank you. And there's a motion and a second. That's in no way intended to cut off discussion or deliberation or amendments just to frame the discussions. So if council members would like to discuss other things that they're hoping to see, or if this just hits the nail on the head. Councilmember Lipton, I thought I saw your hand up for a moment, but I don't see it up any longer. Did you want to comment?
Somebody else commented. It's, it's fine.
Made your comment? Okay. Well, I'd, I'd just like to thank the staff for the effort they've put in on this. This is something that's been a persistent problem for years. And I think, you know, folks feel at uneasy about it when there's, you know, big changes happening around them and things that don't seem to fit in. And so I think this will be a really good community conversation. And I'm looking forward to learning what people want and then more about the types of tools that we can use so that new buildings do match in and add to the vibrancy of the area. So if there are no other comments, I'll just ask for a voice vote from everybody. All those in favor, say yes. Opposed? All right, the motion carries. And with that, we will adjourn so people can go spend time away from the computer. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye.